No, but neither's the clerk's office in our office.
So that little episode when we didn't have any heat cost a grand.
Okay, that's not too bad.
Could be worse.
Yeah.
Could be a lot worse.
Alright, so we're gonna start the meeting at six o'clock. Are there somewhere? This for. To pay day for the project. Okay, so meeting is being recorded. Um, Joanne, do we have meeting minutes or are we gonna take?
Nope, sorry.
Um, so we'll table that until we meet next time, which is not next week, because next week is President's Day. So we won't meet next week, we'll meet the following week with, which I think is like the 29th. No, because that would be the year, will be the first. Alright, um. So, audience participation. Time, so, um, department reports, Jennifer, do you want to come up first? I know you have a hunky seven-year-old Valentine at home waiting for you.
So, actually, this is just an, to, if I'm not doing a vote update.
Okay.
Vote your last week, that were, I will give you an update if we get out of control.
Okay.
So, um, I think everybody's tired of it.
Yeah.
And if you want one, tell me and I, I will do it.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, um. The Board of Health is trying to put together a group of. Re- visiting nurses, a well check, and a social worker.
Okay.
And all, and of course, these are not full-time, very, very part-time, say, let's go to hourly time.
Okay.
And I spoke with the town council. We already know that we have the grant for the visiting nurse, so that's not an issue, that's no, that's, it's a two-year grant. It's been signed, everything's all set, we're just waiting for the. But in the meantime, I want to get going, a well-check person, and this isn't just for, say, seniors, this is for anybody, this could be for. And this is our vision, as the town council, because we're trying to decide, we back up, we're trying to decide whether this should be something that isn't. Is appointed, or this is something that should be done through a contract.
Okay.
So, once we get, council has asked that, we put together exactly what the job description is, what their duties are, what they're gonna do, send it off to him, he's gonna review it. And then, we'll come back to the table and discuss it more.
Okay.
Unless you guys say absolutely not, you don't want to move forward and do this.
So this is something you're working on, building into your budget?
We are looking on, well, that's part two.
Okay, sorry.
So, no, that's okay, the intent of having this wellness check person is not just, again, for seniors, it could be somebody that's, say, web skiing, locally, maybe somebody to come. You know, and check or help them out or whatever, system in, in various ways. Or it could be somebody who is an elderly person who needs help with insulin or something, with something that's the visiting nurse isn't gonna do for. You know, whatever, we'll work that part out and we'll put together.
Description.
A description.
Yeah, okay.
Bring that to the table. Now, as far as the budget goes now, in 21, fiscal year 21, we had a bunch of. And I'm trying to backtrack to see if that's still there, it's something the visiting nurse. It's a very small budget, three fifty, and I don't know what happened to that for fiscal year 2022.
I'm imagining that if it didn't get used, it got.
But it hasn't been used for years and years, and I said, don't get rid of it, because we have been thinking and tossing this up, not knowing that we were even gonna get a grant with COVID. We need help.
Yeah.
You know, so, this can only benefit the townspeople, this, you know, all of us, it's nothing. What I.
Yeah.
And do, beyond what Brett, Dave and I should do. So, um, do you know about how many hours a week you're looking for someone? I, this would be one or two hours, I don't, oh, that it would be every week.
Okay.
And this might just be, uh, you know, let's say, you know, it's, the way I look at it, it's gonna be a service to the residents, and if the residents need it. You know, get on our list, it'll go through the Board of Health, it doesn't go through COA, doesn't matter what your age is, this is strictly for our department.
I like it, have you, um, thought of doing any outreach to see what the needs are, you know, just?
We have had several needs, um, you know, from people, and, and there again, it, it, it varies. So, um, we'd like to work with COA, maybe for the elders to get a list of, you know, somebody who might want to be checked in. You know, make sure they're doing okay.
Yeah.
On a, you know, but. We're not, I, it, this is where it comes to, do we want it to be hourly, or do we really want it to be on-call as needed? Maybe a little bit bold.
Yeah, I think on-call is needed, it's, it's tricky, right, I mean.
I don't want it to be where you have somebody in town that just is looking for the companion and wants to end up.
Yeah.
We don't want, and I don't mean to be cruel, but that's what you have COA.
Sure.
Right, so it's really, basically, do you need, want to need somebody to come by and take your blood pressure? You know, make sure you're doing okay, or, you know.
Can we just go through this with Donnie Brainerd?
We did.
And, and. We, we weren't prepared for that, and I, I, I'm on this board, I mean, I think this is.
Right, we weren't prepared, but there again, if the Board of Health was informed that this had happened, we couldn't have helped it.
We have to make sure about that sort of.
That was, right, that was a, I can't say. But that was just not a, and part of that is why we're bringing, you know, this, that, there is that type of, you know.
But I think the fault with that was with the hospital, because our Board of Health was never notified that the need was necessary.
We weren't notified by the hospital, by any social worker from the hospital, from COA, we weren't notified by anybody.
Yeah.
Until I got a call from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's his name?
Um, I'm wondering if a position like that couldn't help too, with maybe helping with connecting telehealth, you know, maybe going over someone's house and spending ten minutes just on how to. If that's something that they're doing, you know.
I'm, right, you mean with the computer.
If it was someone that, yeah, was doing a telehealth appointment, that, you know, might not be able to access or know how to sign in, or, right, I mean, I'm just thinking of ways to reduce the need for the ride. Somewhere, right, and, so I, I know that that's an issue we have with, with COA and the transportation, we have these amazing volunteers that help, you know, with the van that we were, you know, donated. Um, but if there's ways with this wellness check-in to sort of alleviate some of those rides places, that might be, you know, a good.
I guess I don't follow when you say rides.
So, you know how our COA, we've got, um.
I am.
A couple people that volunteer, so if someone might need a ride somewhere, right, but, um, if they're able to have that wellness check at home, or if they're able.
Right.
To say like, oh, I can do a telehealth appointment from home.
Right.
Um, but maybe just need a hea- a little help with setup or something like that.
Right.
Maybe help with that.
Yes, yes, something like that, yes, but I wouldn't, this person would not be the one to be bringing them to appointments.
Yeah, no, yes, correct, no, that's not what I mean, yeah.
But definitely to help them get set up, you know, and.
Yeah.
And get the health between the online.
The connection thing.
Connection made, or work, walk them through that. Um, yes.
So, what do you need from us next step?
This is according to, um, town council, it's really just to, this is what our board has discussed, has been discussing.
Okay.
Um, really just open communication at this point.
Okay.
And, it's really a matter of, do we want to go contract, or do we want to go? How?
Yeah.
How do we want to do this? Because at first I told him I didn't want a contracted person, and then after talking to him.
He might, yeah.
Right, um, part of it, and he had to explain to me, because I don't know how this stuff works, and I want to make sure that we do this the right way, um, right from the start, so that there's no glitches. Or no, but I do want it to be where the Board of Health takes the role, um, and oversees this person, and. And it was something that if you appoint him, then he, this person would work with you, and, which would be fine, except for, again, if the Board of Health really wants to be the one.
Yeah.
To be able to, we're the co- we're the hub, we're the contact, we want the residents to know that this is what we're, you know.
I think a contract takes some liability away from the town.
And he said that too.
Yeah.
So, because then we got into that discussion of, well, when, you know, you go in, we need to have permission slips written.
Yeah.
You know, can we come and do this? Um, and then there was the insurance part of it, so we had to.
So if you're contracting with a company, then they're sort of covering their own.
But we're not hiring a company, it's really just an individual.
Did the. Uh, lawyer say that you could contract an individual? Because my understanding is if you're contracting with someone, they have to have a. I forget what the form is, but yeah, when they go, when we, in order for us to pay them, they have to have a. I'm not gonna say, I'm just gonna say some random number, it's not gonna be crazy. They have to have a form in order to get paid, right, that like, that says that they have a business.
They, they, they don't, so it's like a, they would just need a 1099 form.
Yeah.
And they can use their social security, you could be one.
So they don't have to be a legitimate business, it could be someone that you're hiring.
I mean, we do have somebody in mind, if we go, again, it all depends on what, you know.
Okay.
You know, we go, and I'm not sure which the better one, so, I think by putting the whole job description down, sending it off to the attorney, and letting him decide. Which way we should be going.
Yeah.
Then come back to the table with you guys.
Yeah. Um, I would say the only, the only concern I'm having is, we are looking at a pretty much a level-funded budget for next year, and then the finance committee is saying, like, okay, so then tell us something extra that you. If there's something extra that you need or something you're adding on, which would be, that would fall under. But I think because we're starting out with a new town administrator, and we're, we're just trying to be a little leery of what our budget looks like, you know, going into next year, so just have that in your mind.
So it would, I don't think that we would be talking so much that it would devastate.
Okay.
Okay, the town, I think we're talking minimal, and I'd like to bring back the, but the line item that we had.
Yeah.
If it's not there.
Yeah.
Because we've had it for years and haven't used it, so.
Okay.
I'd like to bring that. There was a whopping three hundred and fifty.
Wow, there's three hundred and fifty more than we have now, though.
I'm shocked.
It's whopping, I know I almost fell over when I.
But, now, you mentioned something earlier about a grant.
So we do have a grant, um, with, um, that we signed with Southwood for a nurse, a visiting nurse.
Okay.
Um, and, right now, we're in the process of doing interviews, getting it out of the paper, and all of that, so.
Okay.
And as soon as they tell us they.
And that's sort of one piece of it, right?
That is one piece.
Okay.
So if we start off this year, and we can get the wellness checks and the visiting nurse, then maybe next year I can work on social worker. So, maybe. If I'm still here, then.
If you're still here, if, if that's not what you give up.
You, no.
My term is up this year.
Well. Slaves can't do it, so.
No, no, TJ, nobody wants her job.
You're supposed to be on my side.
No, nobody wants it, she'll, she'll be here, she won't be going anywhere.
Okay, you'll make sure of that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
But you already did this. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, if you have any questions, so I can proceed and.
Yeah, talk, yeah, keep us.
And go back and forth with him, okay, great, thank you.
And just for background, Jennifer did ask me before reaching out to town council, and I said. Alright, so it's on record. Um, Dave, come on down. I need prices right.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I have Dee, I can hear someone on the phone, but I do not know who you are.
So this is Peter Langmore.
Oh, hi, Peter, how are you? I have Dee.
Good.
Steve Waldron is giving us a highway report.
Okay, I, I only, I have a meeting at six thirty, um, I just wanted, are you talking about ARPA tonight? If I may, um.
Yes.
About the grant.
Talk about ARPA, um, we aren't there quite yet, but we, did you want to, um, give us some information before you leave about the, um. The broadband.
May I?
Sure, I know that Tom had had a question for you after as well, so, yes, go ahead, Peter, sorry.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I have a Scottish festival Zoom meeting at six thirty.
Okay.
Uh, anyway, so that thirteen thousand, uh, some odd dollars is for the security system at the, uh, at the broadband hut. It's, um, and I thought that by going to ARPA, if we could get it from ARPA, that would, uh, mean that we wouldn't have to take that money from somewhere else. I mean, it's part of the, uh, broad, the, you know, the infrastructure, it, it actually affects everybody in town, uh, well, at eighty-eight percent signed up, so it would affect everybody. And, uh, so that's my, that's my argument, I guess, and I realize there's limited funds, yeah.
If we did not take it out of ARPA, where would it be coming out of, Peter?
I think it would be coming out of either the, um, uh, stabilization or borrowed funds.
Either stabilization or the, um, the money borrowed for, um.
Yes, yes, which, which were already pretty much maxed out on both of them.
Okay. Okay.
Um, that's, you know, I, I'm, the argument that I have is that it affects everybody in town, and I, and I don't mean to be negative, but the water department doesn't affect everybody in town. Um, and I know they're getting a lot of war, uh, money, um, which is fine, I'm a water user, but not everybody is.
Well, they applied for a lot of money, they aren't necessarily receiving that, they did receive some funds, but, um.
Well, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't approved everything else, so if we took this money, sorry, if we took this thirteen thousand out of the borrowed money, we would be paying interest on.
Correct.
Okay, so if we take it out of either stabilization or we use ARPA, then it costs us a little bit less, is that right?
Uh, yes. I don't, I can't give you the amount less, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, you know, overall funding.
Sure, sure.
Um, go ahead, TJ.
Yeah, uh, Peter, what does this, what, what does this alarm about, or is it for an intruder, or if something?
Everything.
Art?
Everything, TJ, so, the alarm is, if, there's, uh, for fire, uh, heat, um, or loss of, uh, electricity, um. Uh, someone, oh, uh, there's, uh, opening the door, there's cameras inside, outside, uh, that camera outside, which is up there, will, you know, cover your, actually, your garage as well. Uh, it'll be a, an alarmed door, uh, like the town hall, be keyed, only certain number of people will have keys, I've already asked the fire department and police how many they need. Uh, so that needs to be, that'll all be maintained, we're gonna pay, uh, you know, fees on those yearly. Um, so fire and, uh, appropriate calls would go to the fire department and police department, depending on what happened. Other than that, it, uh, I'm not sure who's gonna get the calls, right now I am.
So, Peter.
Like it's.
And every alarm system is gonna have, have a code, so the police department, fire department, they're gonna need that code in case of an emergency, and they're gonna be equipped with that. With the key?
Yes, uh, actually Tammy said she needed two, one for each cruiser, and I think the fire chief said three or four, I can't remember, but, they will, and, and as, you know, the town admini- whomever needs the key. I have, I'll have a list, and, and when the time comes, uh, we'll get it.
Okay, and they'll have the food to get in if they need it, necessary.
Well, it'll be a swipe key, like, I think it'll be a key like the, uh, town hall, I'm not sure, magnetic.
So has this been installed yet, Peter, or is this, um?
Yes, 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 it has, Kara, it's been installed, except that the, um, the key access, uh, has not been, um, activated yet.
Um, who is, um, who has access to the video, should we get, make sure that, um, police has access to that?
That's a good question, um, Sabula, uh, or Alarm Works, uh, is doing this, uh, for all of the towns.
Okay.
All of the twenty-some-odd towns, or most of them, anyway. Uh, um, 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 I think they have the, uh, the cameras, uh, feeds.
Maybe just.
I can't answer your question.
And like make that connection, so that in case she wants access to it, or feels that she needs, that might be.
Yeah. I, I don't see that as an issue, really.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever, whatever needs to be done, will, will be done.
Okay. Tom, did you, you had a question?
Uh, this alarm system wasn't figured in in the original plans for this, uh, broadband?
No, it wasn't, um, Tom, uh.
Details.
The, the, the time, I don't, I don't know, it's, you know, at some point they came to us and they said, well, you know, we really think you need a, an alarm system. Um, so, it was late in the project, it was not included in the original, and, and the original bit, anyway, was, was for the construction, this is not, this is more operational.
Right, well, my other feeling is, uh, before something's installed and paid for, it would be nice if you came to the Board of Selectmen and gave us something to expect. Instead of walking in with a bill and saying, well, I want ARPA funds for this. I know we got.
I submitted it, the number. I had submitted it a number of months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if the job was paid for when you submitted this, and I'm not happy.
It hasn't been paid for, Tom, the bill, it hasn't been paid yet.
Okay.
We just got the bill, yeah.
Okay, but I think we should be a little more knowledgeable about all this stuff, all of a sudden now you, you're, you really don't know where you're going with it, you've gotta have a bunch of keys. Nobody's had any train, nobody's had any training about what happens with an emergency with this building, is this in the planning?
Yeah.
So I think, um, Peter, what Tom is asking for is just, um, if, next time, just in advance of, you know, just give us a heads up when this is coming, maybe, you know, before it gets installed, just say, hey, FYI. Um, you know, something along those lines, we have to.
Okay, I, I understand that, but you know, when you officially, when you originally asked for ARPA things, this was included.
Okay, yeah, and first off, we didn't.
Way back when.
In our packet, for some reason, um, we had just seen the other one.
I, I, I did submit it, but I apologize if there was some misunderstanding, but we, nobody's been trained in it yet, Tom, and it's, it's, it, wh- wh- whomever needs to be trained will be trained when the time comes. But as I said, it's not operational, I mean, it is and it isn't, so, I think if you tried to break in there or turn to fire, I think you, the police or fire would get a, would get an alarm.
Okay, um, yeah, I think if you, you just make the connection between, um, and it sounds like you've already reached out to fire and, um, and police, and maybe highway as well. Yeah, and just, um, maybe just, so they have connection information for the, the security company, um, and if, and like I said, and if any of them want access to the video, and if there's any, I know, like, for the other. Video things we have in town, there's, it's just an app and a, the password and, and whatnot, and then that person has access to live video if they need it, um, just to.
Yeah, my biggest concern is. That, like, the telephone building over there, you can't go in there and score lock.
Okay.
We would take Lanford's telephone system back to the dark ages. And I want to know whether or not that's what's gonna happen in this building, if there's fire in there and they hit it with water, what's the result gonna be?
Okay.
You won't have any internet.
No internet, and a lot of people.
I'm not kidding.
Yeah. Phone line.
Well, this is why maybe we're gonna come up with some other equipment to.
Yeah.
And, uh, little building.
Yeah, that's a good question, so what, what would we need to, yeah.
Yeah. That's an excellent question, Tom, yes, that's a good question to, uh, that can be asked when, when the training is scheduled, and when the training is scheduled, I will let everybody know, and whomever. Wants to or needs to be in, we can, we can handle that, I mean, I'm not scheduling it, it's, it would be Sabula or, um, Alarm Works.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, Peter, for the information, we, um, we're, we are gonna talk about ARPA funds tonight, um, we're not there right yet, we'll talk about it, um, after we.
No. I, well, thank you for taking my time now, because I have to get on to this other meeting, but, thank you very much, and incidentally, the, the live link was not part of the, uh, uh, select board minutes, just for your information.
I saw that, yeah.
The select board agenda, okay.
Using, using the meeting code and whatnot.
What happened?
The link just wasn't live, like, you couldn't click on it, you just had to use the meeting code and sign it with Zoom. Zoom is.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Have a good night.
You're welcome, goodbye, thank you very much, guys, bye.
No, for some reason, just the way that it was copied and pasted, it didn't create a clickable link.
Yeah, well, probably the other ones won't either.
But in the past, it has, like, last week, it was fine, so, so I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
Sorry being for me.
I know, Zoom is the pain in the butt, um, Dave, welcome. So, um. Let's talk about this week, you wanna talk about this week first, or do you want to tell me what you have?
Um, well, I left a message with Lisa Me.
Okay, oh, this is, we're talking, uh, gives her?
Yes, oh, yeah, and she just got back from vacation.
Okay.
I talked to her, one of her associates, and I said, I said, it's gonna be a little bit, because she's got back, she says it's gonna be a few days.
Okay.
So she's playing catch-up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, I talked to Dick Gates about. All these logging trucks going up and down the roads lately, and, and I know he used to, he used to talk to Randy a lot about it, and I, I asked him to forward me people, or the companies that are logging in the area. So that I can inform them that when they do start logging, they need to come here to get a, a vote on.
Thank you, yes.
On that, um, it's New Year, so we'll, we'll start it off that way.
Okay.
And hopefully it keeps going that way, on that, because I know there's a couple more coming up soon.
Okay.
On that. Um. Right now, I'm in the process of working on some small bids for North Lanford, for the covert replacement.
Okay.
Um, I reached out to. Three so far, and I got a couple more to reach out to get pricing for, and that.
Is this part that that covert replacement is covered under the grant that we received?
Uh, no.
So.
It's gonna be coming out of, um, the funds from the town, part of, portion of the goal.
So Christopher, has Christopher contacted you?
I have an appointment.
Okay, when, mention that, when you talk to him, because he, um, has been talking about a grant specifically for colverts that he wants to make sure that you're aware of.
Who's it through, V C, V E R?
I do not know, but he wanted to talk to you about that, and let you know that's an upcoming, um, opportunity, so maybe you can roll that into there. I do not know, but he wanted to talk to you about that and let you know that's an upcoming, um, opportunity, so maybe you can roll that into there, just. If it works, that'd be great.
Yeah, I was working on one already.
Okay.
And that doesn't go into that until probably next year.
Oh, okay, it sounded like he was saying something was coming up soon and he wanted to.
Yeah, I already started the process already.
So maybe you're, yeah, okay.
These, the ones I'm talking about are gonna be for, um, we're only to go right at the bottom.
Okay.
That's undersized, um, the one over by, um, Schoolhouse Hill, that one there. And the other one is the beginning of, um, nightclub, that little one there. Um, it's, it's up to four hundred thousand dollars. Um, there's like four phases to it, the first three are for the engineering of it, design and all that stuff. And that would pretty much cover that part, the construction of it, we'd have quite a come later on on that.
Okay.
Because it's gonna cost more than four hundred thousand dollars to probably do one of these tourist cohorts.
Yeah.
Already. But, yeah, I'm, I'm, right now, I just, I just got that, was. Yesterday or the day before I got that.
Okay, could be the same one.
Yeah.
But he sounds like he'll have some, um, insight into how.
Okay, well, there's some questions there, maybe you'll be answering also on, filling out the application.
Great.
Um, excuse me, Dave, uh, the Huntington Road, uh, are these the colvers that the town was wanna replace, or are we buying the colvers or?
No, this is, this, I want somebody replaced through the grant.
Yeah.
Yes, it's just the one right at the bottom of the hill, which is, you know, returns flat and you get, um. Second Street, Second Division's right there, that little covert there, it's like a three foot covert. Um, I looked at it and it needs to be upsized. Because. There's no entrance, there's no exit on it, it's just so big and it just keeps on going, uh, I talked to, um. The gentleman through D E R on that, he says that as long as, they all, they all three connect somehow, we can, we can possibly wrap it into. Into one small grant to get them designed and evaluated. Right, so, um, and it'd be, it'd be like lights in heaven, I, I know, I knew when down there too.
Yeah.
You know, but it's metal, it's galvanized and how much longer is it gonna have down there?
It's probably got no bottom to it now.
Yeah.
I, 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 I went down the other day, I couldn't look, I, I looked in there and couldn't see much, there's so much snow around it, but, um, yeah, that's what most of them happen.
Yeah.
So, and then the other one was, um, since we're talking about ARPA, we still go with it a little bit.
We, um, you had, you're talking about the ones that you had put in for ARPA?
Yes. Um. I was wondering if, if I was able to get that, those funds, because since we weren't. Uh, didn't have the funding from the state or from MEMA, that would be able to use that to do and repair. The, uh, the swell in the catch basins on Chester Road.
So you are specifically looking for, hold on, the drainage on Chester Road?
Yes.
Which was seventy-five thousand.
Correct. And if I'm able to get that, I can start working on it and send it, get it up to bid and have it probably started April to May.
Um, we. What did I say, how much we actually had still, I think we have like seventy thousand in our.
Yeah, then we've got a hundred and.
So we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand coming, Dave, that we don't have to spend right now. So I think that if we talk about that one, we might have to wait until that money comes in, but I don't know when. That money is coming in, I don't know if that's a question, Caleb, that you can try to, um, reach out and see for us if there's, if you have an idea when the next.
I presume it'll be in by the construction season.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah.
Um, but we can put that on the top of our radar for when that, when we receive that.
Yeah, the other ten was gonna be for, uh, improving, um, Hayden Road.
Yeah, you, and, um. And then you had, oh no, that's Dave Mottar, okay, so that's, those are the only two.
Those are two, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Oh, um, I was just about done.
Okay, I thought you meant used up for a second, I almost cried a little.
No. This is just about down there already, but it's a smaller, smaller ones, but yeah.
Great.
Uh, I guess need the packets or whatever we have to fill out.
Um, Joanne has all that, um, we had a finance meeting, had a, finance had a meeting last week. And Joanne and I met with them, um, and they were giving departments a deadline of the twenty eighth, was that?
Twenty budget?
Yeah, twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Um, so thank you for having that time.
I sent it out today.
This means it's gonna be correct, but it's.
It's a draft.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I basically told everybody that I'm not being patient about it, I don't have time to chase them, and please just get this stuff.
Just do it, yeah. You sound like.
Don't be a baby.
With high schools.
Just do it and get it to me, okay? Cause I'll come looking for you. But who's gonna put ours together?
Who's doing ours, yeah, now, maybe you and I can, can like talk about it at some point, would that be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Um. I'm gone now, okay, I mean, we're gonna have to do it this week.
Then now, you did get the cemetery budget. I sent it into, uh, Janet, and.
Okay.
Janet, Janet, like inherit, kinship?
Janet Lombardo.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't have that.
You don't have, I'll print out a copy and drop it off.
Did you do it today?
Huh?
Did you do it today?
No, I did it back in first of January.
You're amazing.
I am.
Um, we're gonna pretty much level funds ours, aren't we?
Oh, okay.
Right, cause that's what the request was unless, yeah, um, unless we think of anything that we were like, oh, we really wanted to add this, or. We can take a look and see if there's anything that's like really underspend. Um, do we don't, we don't have a thing for this week, do we, an expense report, is that next week?
No, that's next week.
Next week, okay, um.
Oh, that would pretty much tell the budget, doesn't it?
Yeah, so.
Meeting next week.
Got it.
Yeah, the week after, um, okay, all right, let me see if I can find that and then I'll take.
It's easy enough.
Uh, okay, so. Dave, continue, sorry, that's where I were.
Um, made contact with the superintendent at Gateway, I talked to her, we discussed things. Um, that's all fine and discussed with the, um, the bus company too, so I finally got a. Phone number involved for both people.
So we should cram that on Tuesday, last Tuesday? I think, last week at some point.
Yeah, Monday we had.
After ship service before the close.
So last week, there was a day where, um, Gateway had a half day because they had, uh, paid a professional development company to come in and train the teachers. And so, um, the superintendent was hesitant to call, no, to call, the delay because it would have meant no school, and then it would have meant. That they were, if she was trying to just make sure that they were not wasting money there. Um, and so she's like, I think I made a bad call, I probably should have canceled it, um, and I know that there was some difficulties with communication.
Yes.
Um, so it sounds like by the end of the day, you had tied up loose ends with communication to, um. The bus garage as well as superintendent, because she did reach out to me and say, can you share?
Yeah.
Dave, I think she had been checking with Chester and Russell, but felt like Blanford needed to be on the radar.
Like the wrong height.
Yeah, yeah, so what, in your opinion, um, was the situation with Russell, Stage Road, how could we?
Mother nature.
Do we, should we be doing anything different as far as like pre-treating or?
Pre-train, you treat, you treat, you treated till like, uh, one thirty that night.
Okay.
Um, then all of a sudden, just like, ah.
Yeah.
It froze, you know?
Okay. Okay.
So.
And if it's raining or, or free treat washes it away and you've lost it.
Yeah, it was a messy night.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we put, we put down a lot of material, a lot of, added a lot of grit.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I bought some new stuff from Tonalino, and I tell you, it's some, it's better than sand, but it's a little more pricey.
Yeah.
But, but I wanna use that on the railroad's too, you know?
Especially in the.
But, uh, that we, I, I thought we're at the beach for a second.
Yeah.
And then like I said, you know, once it got rain on it, it all froze, so.
Well, it sounds like.
I, I met with Beth that morning down at the bus company.
Okay.
I heard.
And, uh, after she went up one side of me, down the other side of me and danced a little bit on my forehead, uh.
You just got the forehead?
Yeah, I got private act, but, uh. We, we, she got calmed down and that, and one of the, one of the big complaints is, is that Blanford's never ready, and, uh. I don't know, it's my, my job to address it, but, uh, I, I don't know why, but. I guess us and Middlefield are. Never prepared for whatever, and I don't know what you can do about it, I just thought that, uh, maybe, you know, if, uh. You talk with her and toss around some ideas, because they, they, they got those buses, they're, they're leaving at five thirty.
Did she want him to do it the night before?
Pardon?
These guys are on the road.
I mean, we're out to one thirty that night.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but, but the point is, is that she had two buses off the road in the morning, of course, we know the circumstances. I'm just say, thinking that there must be some way that if we know. We got crap coming at us, if we can start a couple of guys early to, to get those roads, because safety for the school buses is by primary.
But you, you, you can't predict mother nature.
No, but we can listen to the weather and figure out.
That's, that's what I did, yeah, I mean, I listened to three different radio stations and T V stations.
Yeah.
And it's, it's this little funnel.
Yeah, I think it's, it's part of where we are.
Just, just, just a funny thing, at that same day, I brought my grandson to school, so I'm going down these same roads, I didn't leave till eight fifteen. When I came in later and all this talk about icing, there is nothing wrong with the roads, and so this is how fast things change around here, that's all.
These guys are doing a damn good job.
Tough call.
No, I.
Yeah.
Uh, other than telling the guys, what, you can't go home at three thirty today, because it might storm at six o'clock tomorrow morning, there's nothing better you can do.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I, I've waited, no, in, in, in other towns, we're gonna get, you know, a big storm, it's gonna start at five o'clock, it's gonna start at six o'clock. And your, your trucks are loaded, you're ready to go, and then six hours later, it starts snowing out.
Now, you know, I, I understand that, I understand that, but it's just that, uh, you know. I, I just think that there, there should be some way that we can. When we know something's gonna happen, whether we put in a split shift or hire part timers to, to help, I don't know, I just. I just don't like getting a phone call at, you know, six o'clock in the morning telling me that there's buses off the road, and I don't think you would either.
I, and I think.
I was up, so.
I think part of that TJ is sort of in retrospect, the conversation wasn't had with Blanford, and Blanford, we are in a bit of our own, uh, I don't know what's the time, so.
Elevation.
We're in elevation, right, and it's a little bit different, and so I think that to fix that, and so that conversation's had with Blanford, because. Where our roads are very different than Russell, you know, it's gonna be a really different, you know, and so, um, and so if that call is. Well, no, because Blanford says no, or we need a delay because Blanford needs a delay, then that's, you know, where I am in, in, in Southwood Town Regional, it's all based on Grant. You know, like Southwood's fine, but Grant was a mess.
But the, the other point is, this is the first time that there's been a school bus mishap in how many years?
Yeah.
School buses have been running these roads forever.
And this is our first time where a new superintendent and a new highway superintendent.
He's not prepared, I don't wanna hear it.
Yeah, so I think, I think that, I mean, I listened to the complaint that came in, I had a conversation with Dave, I felt satisfied that Dave had resolved the situation. By the end of the day, um, you know, he was up right on top of it, he had had someone out there, you know, he told me they were there at six fifteen and doing whatever. So I felt like it was resolved at the end of the day. Uh, Joanne?
Um, I just, um, in parts of the conversation, I also heard that Hopson used to contact Highway, and she knew.
And so, yeah.
He's talked to her and she's gonna do that now.
Perfect, yeah.
Didn't you, is that?
What was that, what?
Uh, the new superintendent.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So that might.
Pulled it in the loop and now.
Oh, I didn't tell you?
You didn't tell me.
I think I did.
I hate it when they keep secrets from me.
Consider yourself told.
I didn't know a thing about it till I next morning.
I think I tried to call you, maybe, I don't know, maybe I did.
You text me.
I was bugging him, I was bugging him.
Text me and I'm hearing this stuff on my phone.
Wake up!
The hell, though.
All right.
A lot of it's resolved, that's why.
As long as it's resolved.
You know.
Sorry.
Spring's coming in, supposed to be nice and nice.
That's right, we'll take it.
Call me up, I got a little bucket of sand in the back of my truck. I'll help you.
Do you have anything else for us, Dave?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay.
How's your truck doing?
My trucks, I just got a call, I put one inside, we worked on the other ones inside getting, um. Computer attached to it. Yeah, well, we have a, I have a, the small flatbed we had, it's two thousand twelve, and it's got a hundred and fifteen thousand miles on it, and. The driver was driving and engine light came on, so. He pulled it back to the yard, got out, turned everything all up, checked everything, it recycled, engine light went off, drove around a little more. Engine light came on, then the wench went on, it was a little wench, and she goes, oh, that's, that's not good. So, brought it back to the shop, let it sit for like fifteen, twenty minutes, let it cool down, um, he says that transmission was a little. Little smoky at that time, so, um. He parked it, let it cool down, and went back out for another hour or so, and the next day, he was, he, lucky he was able, he has, he had his own computer. He forgot to his truck, up to trucks and cars, and it came back with eleven key, um. Numbers on it. What was wrong with it and so on and so forth. Um, so, I called Sarah, took me down to them, and they just called me today, that, uh, they just brought it in and they'll be looking at it.
Okay.
These are all under warranty?
I wish.
That one, uh. That one I, no, the Mac is. It's always the one of them.
Yeah, the, the Mac is under warranty, uh, we do have another plow truck, uh, we have the old, uh, army dump truck, without the sander in it. But it has a plow on it.
Okay.
Um, I forgot to mention Tom the other day, because he asked me about the other truck, there's a charging problem with it. Uh, we had, when we headed up here last year, and we put new alternator on it, started it up, and it started smoking. And they're like six, seven hundred hours apiece.
The alternator inside the, the, uh, generator is not working.
Well, it's either that or it could have been the unit on the heart headboard or the thing, be bad.
Yeah, okay.
But, uh, yeah, that's, we're gonna get it down to the garage and put it inside, once the other truck is all done. They put new lights on it, new marker lights, changes the oils in it, right now they do hydraulic oil, and that truck will be all set, you know? Four good batteries you're in it, so that's good, they're two hundred and fifty dollars apiece. And the other four are, the one, you know, we got one bad one that's dead, and the other three or two are coming in. Charging up halfway decent, so, uh, tomorrow and next, we're gonna bring that truck down here. Garage, go through it, check everything out, so.
But we don't have anything in the near future as far as snow race goes, right?
None, none, got a little rain coming up, but it's gonna be like.
Warm next week.
Warm, yeah.
Um, Thursday was gonna get some rain, it was supposed to be almost fifty-five out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
How did our salt and sand budget, did we, I feel like we didn't spend a lot.
Wow, don't be fooled.
Don't be fooled, okay.
Because, because I talked to Sean, he, he said, I need, I need a W nine, I says, okay. So I got him a W nine and, uh, I'm down to probably twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
What?
What's that mean?
Now, that shit from Tonalino. You don't have to use as much of it, right?
Uh, I just use it for what we can on the dirt roads.
No, but the point is, if you don't have to use.
Oh, we don't use it, no, no.
Then even though it's more expensive, you're gonna save money in the end.
Yes, and we'll take a scoop of it. Yes, and we'll take a scoop of it and mix it into the sand.
So in Jan- at the end of January, I'm looking at the expense report, we had only spent eleven thousand roughly out of the.
Correct.
So out of the hundred and twenty thousand for the salt and sand, cloud blades.
Oh.
Winter expense, snow and ice. So I'm sure that that's jumped in February, but it's probably still pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, there'd be about twenty-five thousand left, I believe.
For salt and sand?
Yes.
Which started at fifty-five.
Yep.
Cool, that's not bad.
No, I I and right now, I'm waiting for a bill from another company from Oregon Salt, because they were our first company that delivered. And they never sent me an invoice.
Okay.
And I and I and I sent them a a letter or email last week. I need I need an invoice, and I still haven't heard anything yet.
Okay.
Oh, I'll be free. Wait another week, we're trying to make a thank you, don't.
Yeah, don't let it drop.
Yeah.
I'll put it down for a sec, or, thank you.
Yeah, hey, what's this about the the electric car parts?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's something.
Yeah, I got that too.
That's Caleb. Uh, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, all right, I give you a little hint on that. Um, there's a few towns that have done that and they realize that they have to pay for electricity.
Right.
Yeah, their customer going, correct.
Yeah. That's that's.
Well, I'm gonna pick white.
Yeah, there you go.
Tesla doesn't, Tesla, you don't put your own Tesla point in here, they'll pay for it.
That'd be sweet.
But you have to have, you have to adapt if you don't have a Tesla car.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Sorry for taking up so much time.
No, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
We didn't have anyone else join us, so you're good.
All right, then.
We we are on ARPA. So. Okay, so we're on ARPA, um, let me just double check our numbers from last time. I will share the screen. I think that when we spoke last time, we realized we had about seventy-one thousand left. Um, so, look, and I put a number in and I didn't say what it was, or one eighty-seven, one fifteen. That number, I hate when I do that. I just need to pull up the.
Did you check for the store and?
No, that'll be tomorrow. You're signing, you're signing that tonight.
Oh, okay.
The store and the, um, the fair are both in there.
But the water department got theirs.
That happened a while ago.
Okay.
Yes, quite a while ago.
All right, I think the email I'm looking for is coming from you, Joanne, that gave me the number.
You should have it in your package in front of you. I get, I copied the sheet that you gave me.
Did I put that number in there, though? It was the email you got response from, who would you have asked?
Oh, sorry.
Who did you ask for it? And and they got back to us with the number.
Oh, that was Sean, and that was a while ago.
It was Sean?
Yeah, that was a few weeks ago.
It was a few weeks ago. So if I look for an email from.
What he told me was, we received a hundred and eighty-seven thousand and.
That's what it is, not enough.
Right, and it and it should be on your.
I did, but I didn't label it. Okay, here we go. So we had received one eighty-seven, one fifteen. We had expended seventy-eight at that point, but let me just double check my other list to make sure that's. So now we've expended one sixteen.
One sixty?
One sixteen. So we received one eighty-seven. Um.
We've got seventy-one bucks.
Seven, one fifteen.
Seventy-one dollars.
So seventy-one thousand, that's right. Okay, so we've got seventy-one thousand remaining. Which is why we can't, um, approve the seventy-five thousand for Dave right now. Um, we could look at the ten thousand for Dave, though, if we wanted to look at.
And I think we probably should have pulled that time.
So in front of us tonight to talk about for ARPA, we had, we had asked for two. So we do have the two that we asked for, which I put in my folder, um, which is the one, which is the thirteen for broadband. And.
For, uh, iron.
And iron blenders, let me see, is it in here?
Uh, did she, so like, uh, Peter filled out one of those expense forms? Did Wendy fill out one?
You mean, what we present the?
Yeah.
On top of the bill? No, I do that.
Oh.
I know that part, yeah, Wendy gave it, Wendy gave a list of what she intends to do.
Yeah.
So Wendy's looking for the redesign, which would be, um, a full site upgrade. It would include reviewing analytics to better understand where users are going. What information they're seek most often to make this easily accessible if it isn't already. How are people accessing the site on a desktop, tablet, phone? How can we improve the usability in each format? Are these areas on this, are there areas on the site that don't see any traffic at all? Two, review other town and city websites to see what they're doing in terms of organization and presentation of information. Features, usability, et cetera, what can we add? Are there things we can do better? Re-explore the addition of subscription notification feature, so users can sign up for email notifications when a document is posted. So for example, agendas for conservation commission, et cetera, when news is posted. Uh, four, migrating assets, lots of documents, we've amassed over fifteen hundred news posts and all page data. Number five, improving the design interface based on current usability best practices. The current site design was launched in twenty sixteen, old by internet standards. This element will be, um, also be informed by number one, the reviewing analytics. Uh, six, upgrading all technology behind the site. The current design is not compatible with a PHP update, which is badly overdue. And seven, any other necessary desired improvements to keep the site fresh and, um, useful to our audience, please share any thoughts or ideas. Um, so all important stuff. I think that, um, accessing the website is.
Yeah, and also, we're having, you know, we haven't done it twice back on that generator.
Okay, and that, I think we approved, we didn't approve that. Okay, that was the other one in front of us. Um, so, I mean, in my mind, I think that. Having a website that is accessible and up to date and people can, you know, pay bills and access documents and find fees. And, you know, fill out and complete forms and turn them into the proper place is, um, definitely something that makes us run smoothly smoothly. Um. Do you both think it's worth the eleven, I mean, I think it's worth, I mean, I guess this is what it's cost. But do you think it's something that's valuable to spend our ARPA funds on, or what are your thoughts?
Well, we blow a lot of money with the water department, I think we ought to. Uh, improve the the website so that people can utilize it more.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
As was pointed out earlier, this will benefit everybody.
Yeah.
No.
And I think also maybe folks interested in moving to town, doing some research, I think that having a good website.
Yeah, pretty employees. We use it a lot, you know?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, because I I sometimes I get on there and I get lost real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I think I think we need to do the improvement.
Ever been on Russell's website?
Come on, I'm not good.
Oh, it's archaic. Um, yeah, I mean, okay, so, uh, let's talk about the next one then, and then we can come back and and go and stuff. So the next one we have is the broadband. Um, if we, so there's a couple other choices for this. I would for not to go with a bond, because I don't wanna pay the interest on it. Um, or stabilization is another option, which we have put aside funding.
What what about free cash? What have we got for cash?
We had approved, I think it's about half a million. Um, but we can't designate free cash, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it hasn't been certified.
Yeah, so we, when does it get certified? It's like right around town meeting, right? Yeah, so we we can't touch that, yeah, I mean.
All right, so we'd have to go to stabilization.
I would, I would like to see that thirteen thousand come out of stabilization.
Yeah.
Uh, it seems to me that all we're doing with this broadband right now is throwing money at it.
Yeah, I agree.
I think stabilization was set up for some of the stuff, so I certainly don't mind going.
No, I think we should go to stabilization.
Okay.
And then when free crash is certified, we'll always replace it.
Okay. Um.
No, we have to replace that on town meeting floor.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay, so stabilization for for that one, I think is a good idea. Um, and so the next one we're talking about, um, was the ten thousand for for Dave, at least to get him started with some stuff for Hayden Road Drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
I think that's a good, infrastructure is always a good thing for ARPA.
Yeah, I agree. And we haven't approved any for the highway yet.
No, sure, I I I think we should go with the.
Which one is this?
This is a ten thousand dollar request from Dave Waldron for drainage on nine Hayden Road, and I need it. Um, and then the other one that we had wanted to talk about tonight was the possibility of, we just don't have a final number yet, but the backup power at town hall, the generator.
Yeah, I've, I'll work, I can to get it for two weeks from time.
And so if we if we agree to these two bills tonight, then we're looking at, um, a remainder of about fifty-one thousand, so that would still fit in our budget.
Yeah, because I'm hoping we can bring that in under thirty.
Okay.
Now.
That would be great.
Is that gonna, is that gonna enhance the generator we got, or is it a separate generator?
No, it's part being utilizing that generator. How it would work is if the power goes off, that generator will kick in, it will run this building.
Okay.
If there's a fire and a sprinkler pump started up, it'll shut the rest of it off.
Okay.
Which, go ahead, everybody's supposed to be out anyway, and it.
Right, and you don't need the electricity.
No, it's just like your holes are gonna be in there.
All right, that's on, that sounds good, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so, um, I would make a motion to, um, approve the request for, um, eleven thousand dollars of ARPA funding. Um, for, uh, iron blender to, um. Update the, to upgrade the, um, town website.
Sure.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and then the next, I would make a motion to approve the request for ten thousand dollars, um, from Dave Waldron. Uh, for the purpose of improving drainage at nine Hayden Road, the highway department. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so let me. Move that over to the approve section. Yes, Mary?
So that was Hayden Road?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move that one over and we gotta change the color to green. And then we're gonna take this guy. There. So that means that we've spent a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and five hundred and fifty-eight dollars from the ARPA, uh, funding so far. But I feel like we're doing a good job diversifying the spending. I don't feel like we've sunk it into one place, we're doing.
I don't feel like we're just kicking it around.
Yeah, yeah, so I I feel good about that. Cool, all right, so, um, next up, there's no unfinished business. We have our town administrator report.
Um, wanted to kind of circle back to the rapid recovery plan.
Okay.
Um, you as the grant, um, application that was submitted on the town's behalf. Was rejected, and, um, I guess you got the note from Ira Prenski. And evidently, um, he, uh, was at a meeting this morning. To try to find out more information about, um. You know, what were the reasons and, um, to get some guidance, uh, for possibly re-submitting the grant application again on behalf of the town. And, um, I had a conversation with Ira prior to the meeting, and I talked to him about it. And, um, the way the grant that was submitted on the top on behalf of the town. It doesn't look like, um, you know, based on the information you received from the. I guess they call it the Mass Office of Business Development. Um, that, uh, anything to do with Brandon or Ray Farin or anything like that. It's, uh, not something that he thinks is gonna. It's not gonna fly.
Okay.
Um, he mentioned wanting to talk to, to talk to you about possibly coming up with a different angle for possibly. Um, submitting, uh, uh, re-submitting a new, a new grant, but, uh, maybe concentrating more on signage or. Um, possible, uh, use of funds for improvements to underutilize properties or. Even for the cafe, if you wanted to do some kind of outdoor seating. Uh, to promote business development and things like that.
Okay.
Those are examples that that, um, that we discussed. Um, one of the issues is that, um, I guess the, um, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission doesn't have. Much funding left to pay for his time.
Oh, for Ira?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Basically being restricted to, um, you know, not many hours of time.
Oh, that's a bummer, okay.
But, um. Again, you may wanna talk to him, um, at some point, whenever you could find time to call him tomorrow. Uh, because we discussed some of the ideas. I thought maybe the fair, um, the agricultural fair.
Yeah.
Potentially, we could get some money.
Is Ira gonna write whatever grant we come up with?
Okay, he said he would write the grant and re-submit.
Okay.
But and then maybe even the cafe, because I think the money that we approved, I told him about the ARPA funds that we had approved. Um, for the agricultural fair. And for the country store. And he wanted to know if she's gonna reopen the cafe, and I thought that she was.
Yeah, that's her plan, yeah.
So signage and possibly utilizing underdeveloped property, where you have a park, you can make improvements.
We had talked a lot about walkability too, I wonder if that's, um.
Connectivity of some kind.
Yeah.
Connectivity, yeah.
Yeah, because we could definitely use some funding for that, if that would be available, okay.
So if you can touch base with him, because he's got to submit this by the end of the week, because Monday's a holiday and the deadline.
Okay.
It just came up kind of rapidly. No pun intended, rapid recovery plan, it came up rapidly and they're they're kind of under the gun to get this done by the end of the week. Um, so, but I I I would like to see him submit something on behalf of the town and see if.
Yeah.
Get something out of this.
If he's gonna write it.
Yeah.
We'll take it. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna set myself an alarm tomorrow.
Yeah.
To call Ira.
Yeah.
Can, excuse me, that's the, um, economic development council grant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just to update you on the Green Community Annual Report, um, still gathering information. Uh, found out that a couple of the vehicles, I guess, that they were utilizing in the report. The highway department no longer has those vehicles. One of them is a Freightliner and one was a Chevy truck. They're both gone, so they had to update the information on that, they removed them.
So that's the information he's looking for?
Well, that and, uh, energy usage, which is oil and propane.
Okay.
Um, so I put in calls to Sunset Oil and Osterman Propane today.
Just a minute, what are you talking about? You're talking about what we've spent on oil and propane? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I I have all those records.
Oh, perfect, okay.
I have all that stuff. I've been saving it for more than a year.
Well, this is only evident now, when they say yearly report, I thought they were talking about a different timeframe. But they're talking about from July first of two thousand twenty-one to the present.
Fiscal year, okay.
For this particular fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two.
So Jo- Joanne, um, should have everything that you need for that.
Yeah.
I don't have Osterman, um, but I have Sunset Oil and I have Burke.
Well, Osterman, we should be able to get just from, um, the treasure, what is?
Well, I already, I asked about that from the, um, from the accountant. And he said usually you go right to the, uh, to the vendors for that kind of information. And I kind of remember that from.
Okay, so the only one I don't have.
Go directly to Osterman, we don't use them. Records of the, uh. So the uh the number of deliveries and what the amount of usage was. That's what you're looking for, non-amount.
Did you hear what I said though? Osterman is the only one I don't have.
Osterman, I did. I was able to. You got Sunset Oil, then.
Dennis Burke is where he gets diesel and and regular gasoline.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just because I don't wanna um end up outside of our timeframe with them and you know, stand losing our status or whatever. Um, so if you need anything else, uh let Joanne know cuz she has been collecting information for Green Community stuff. Um, and has all the data, so she should be.
I think that's the only remaining information we put in the report.
Perfect. Okay, great.
I think I gave um the um the town administrator contract uh agreement. I think she retyped it. Um, you'll have to just look at it and um see if that's what you wanna go to go with. The number I I asked you about the nine month notice.
And we did look at that, yeah. And it so it's the ninety day um, which is three a three month notice, which we all agree sounds fair. It takes us that long to find someone.
But what about there was that one section though that had nine nine months?
So what I found, I was looking under um the termination, it says um the town administrator shall give the town ninety days written notice in advance unless the parties agree otherwise.
That's for the town administrator himself.
Correct. If he were to uh he or she were to leave the position.
Right, but under the section that I pointed out. One section in there. Non-renewal agreement. Yeah, that's under section six. I well, there are two different agreements. One, I think you you renewed the contract. Page six, it's it's under section sixteen, non-renewal agreement.
Okay, got it. If the board intends not to renew this agreement at the expiration of the term for any or no reason, the board shall give at least nine months written notice to the interim town administrator prior to the expiration of the current contract of its intent not to renew. If the board so fails to get such an okay, so.
Mine doesn't even say interim. I think this at this point, it's he's the town administrator. I have the contract that says town administrator. Written notice to the town administrator.
Yes.
So it's the same thing. It's exactly the same.
So if we were to decide not to renew the contract with the town administrator, we would have to say nine months out. So what do you?
Last year of the contract.
What do you feel? Do you guys wanna shorten that up a little and give us six months or do you think that's fair to both parties?
Gives us time and gives the individual time.
You're fine with keeping it nine months? Okay.
Alright, so.
Everything else looks good. I mean, I didn't have any. Yes.
Is there anything in the contract that says upon separation or termination, the town administrator shall turn over all documents, information, whatever?
Um, it says all kinds of work schedule, compensation, termination, um. Don't. This one is actually the interim. I don't know if it was added into the actual. It says.
It doesn't really address that, but that's I think that's kind of an, I mean, you assume that the person is not gonna be taking any um materials or records or anything like that. That would be illegal to do something like that from the town.
Um, we can certainly reach out to um, we can ask that question to town council. Would it be um, would it be possible or unnecessary?
I think it might be a little out here to have a paragraph in there.
Yeah.
I know that Joanne had created termination packets for us, not termination packets. Like when someone leaves, you had created packets years ago and someone leaves, it was like things that they hitting now.
Oh, no, I keep track of when when I pass out keys and short card, you know, swipe cards, things like that.
But yeah, as far as like um yeah, I mean, we certainly ran into that.
Things like that would be. Proper. So I mean, that would be.
Yeah.
Material on a computer or something like that. It might be important to us.
Can't hurt to put it in there. I would just check with town council and see if um if that's something that they could add for us.
Yeah, or or at least how to find it on the computer or print off hard copies before you leave or something.
I don't think we can get that specific, but maybe it would be something general.
You certainly you may want something in there where they they would not delete or remove um documents. Agreements and things like that, that those would be available to their successor or the select will.
So if you.
Just so you don't have to keep calling.
Yeah, I can. I can certainly contact town council and ask about that.
That would be great. And then once that's done, we really do need to get a move on um
Yeah.
getting it in place because we've got um just a couple of weeks until uh he joins us.
Right.
So thank you.
Um, I guess uh Joanne had given me a copy of the letter that um uh Congressman uh Richard Neal had submitted on behalf of the town. With my letter attached that I had sent to him. So um it looks like he did his job.
Yeah, great.
Represented the town and hopefully that's gonna result in the town getting the grant.
That'll probably be the first time he did something for the town.
It'll be a big update for the fire department to get all new.
Yeah, it's much needed. And it's we knew it was gonna be overwhelming to try to budget that.
Yeah. So I guess we did mention something about the electric vehicle charging station. I only, I mean, I I brought up because the email was sent and I thought it was worth looking into. But uh if the town's gotta pay for the electric, uh you certainly would think you'd have some kind of a a meter with a credit card thing.
In other states, I've seen it.
Cuz my daughter says it costs her four bucks. Cuz she's got a hybrid.
Yeah.
And but she has to take it and recharge it and it's four bucks every time.
Yeah.
For the hybrid?
Yeah.
That that regenerates the electric. You know, so.
Right. But it doesn't regenerate.
That might be a good um down the road next year, uh something for Christopher to uh look into, but that is, yeah, definitely not.
For somebody else's.
Well, yeah, and we just.
Once they buy my gas.
Well, the idea is that wood converting to to electric benefit us as a town. And that's something that we could research, Christopher could research and we can and and Dave can look at and you know, there's certainly a lot of incentive to do that. Um, Mr. Skeptical, I see the look on your face. So you know, if we got the data and it was like, yes, you will save this much money a year and we wanted to start researching that, then you know, absolutely.
I'm waiting to see how the highway department is gonna make out with the water trucks when they gotta plow small for thirty hours.
Right, but for right now, I don't wanna talk about it because it's just one more thing that we can't.
Now, now what's what's that grant that uh you're gonna call about?
That is the um RRP and it is, we had, we were looking for um signage and wayfinding and we had met as committees.
We didn't get.
We did not get.
And and Pioneer Valley is running out of money. I'm on the executive board there. I wanna find out.
Evidently, Ira's got some uh of some kind of agreement with them.
So his time, Ira's time is limited.
Spent time writing grants. And so now he's going back to try to reach some debt on behalf of all these communities. I think everyone that he represented, none of them got a grant.
Okay. This is what I'm trying to find out. I wanna make.
I don't think it was really his fault. About what we should really put in it. You know, they they just didn't give enough proper guidance.
Yeah.
Questionary, so are we resubmitting this economic development grant?
I'm gonna have a conversation with him and see what his meeting was about.
Yes.
And if there's something we can. Uh, okay, so.
Um, and then the host community agreement. I of course I left because of the freezing rain. I left early, but uh I did mention it to Joanne and that you uh the positive you checked. So to pay for legal uh costs. So are and am I contacting the attorney to have her draft the whole community agreement?
Um, did we leave it that it was up to us to contact? We had agreed that we would move forward with um the host agreement. As the new company.
Carol Tender made a motion to move to, oh, never mind.
So, yeah, I guess you could, I mean.
I I would think so because I think what you've done in the past is that the the town council uh um has basically drafted these whole community.
Yeah, so you can reach out and let them know um Joanne has the wording that the um motion that we made.
Okay.
And just let them know that the board approves um to move forward.
This motion says, I hope I didn't get this right, wrong, I'll change it if I did, uh made a motion to allow Kenna LLC to create a host community agreement with town council.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so if you just let town council know, you could even do it via email. That the board has approved that so that when they contact town council, they know that, yes, that is approved. Yes, Mary.
Uh, on the electric vehicle charging station, was that for town trucks and?
So it was a um.
That was more for the public.
It was an email that came in and it's um spearheading the deployment electric vehicle vehicle charging stations in governmental locations via flow charging network. Um we've been working with cities and towns to install stations, including the city of Hoyo. Hoyo applied and was awarded uh funding for mass EVIP grant program to cover a hundred percent of the charging station. Um, so I think it's awesome. But uh we're just not there. And it does talk about either for public or municipal fleet use.
Okay, the the West Springfield Library has three or four electric car charging places.
Yeah, it's cool. There's a lot. You see a lot of them around. I actually saw a car plugged in the other day.
Probably has to pay though, but you you would have to pay, right? It's a great service.
The one, the one, the one like a big wide bump down by the Westville Post Office, that's free.
That's free.
Okay, no more talk about electric vehicles.
I have one last thing.
Okay.
And I think it's in your packet. Um, the amendment to the Community Development Block Grant contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, I put in a call.
To the you needed to sign, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
This one here for signature?
Yes, but. Yeah, it's still on there. And then the other thing is is that um what you what you're gonna see with that agreement is that there's an attachment uh A, which is scope of services. And then there's actually some additional pages uh that require signature in front of a notary. And I I looked at the previous contract, it almost seems like there's pages missing from that. Because you only had one page that you signed in that contract. And I could show it to you. Yeah, most of it is just uh, you know, useless, but um the signature pages there that you see. If you look at the original contract and you compare it, you don't have um two of those pages where it says authorized signature name. You don't have that in in the contract that I have that I found in the office. And you don't have the one where you actually appear before a notary.
Alright, so this is the page that needs to be notarized. This page, community values, community chief.
And then under the authorized signatory name, that would be whoever can sign contract documents on behalf of the town, which
Which is just.
Typically the town administrator.
So do I put Christopher's name in this yet?
Uh, you could put his name.
Yeah.
You could put his name there. Um, and then you would have to sign the bottom of the of the first page and then you would sign in front of a notary. The the other page there um prior to the authorized signatories.
Okay, so then I can't sign the other page right now.
You can't sign it until you appear before a notary.
So we have, so we'll have to invite Doris here.
Doris probably is here. You want me to go get it? If she's here, would you mind?
Oh, do you mind? Perfect, thank you.
Door open for outside?
Yes. Oh, it's freezing out there.
I've been unlocking it day to day, Mary. I keep trying to figure out how to do it and I just haven't had the time to.
Oh, it's I remember.
Carrier swipe card for a while. You've signed what?
Do you remember I used to have to be connected to that port right there? I used to have to plug in.
Yeah, he moved all that.
He moved it. And so then when you when you plug in, you get on, there was like a way to change the um hours. It was right in there.
And I wrote it down last time I, when I, when we went into lockdown and it's and I tried to reverse it and it's just not.
If you don't do it every day.
And it's not working really well. I'm gonna have to get them into.
I'm surprised cuz.
Josh couldn't figure it out. Josh sat with it for hours.
Same amount of money. That's a good uh notice right there.
We also have the thing in front of us from Sarah. Um, or something that she wants us to take a look at funding.
Yeah, for payroll.
For payroll um to protect our, to further protect our employees. Uh, we had a identity theft and this is something she's looking at.
When I was looking through the document there, they got two foot thick walls in the building and ten foot high barbed wire fencing around it and all that. That Sarah's recommending for the payroll. Payroll services.
Do I need to say, what does this say?
What's that?
Disclosure, report financial interest in project.
Yeah, that was the one that.
I don't.
Yeah, I'm not either. This is part of amended contract. That's why I put in a call to.
So I'll do the rest and then we can just wait on that. Cuz I don't know who, what I'm supposed to be putting in here. It's saying first name of anyone that has reportable financial interest in the project. Developers, contractors or consultants.
That's why I called him because I wanted to get some clarification.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I really don't know what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Mary, I'm citing this. Okay, and then this other part is for you. So what we can do, um. It give me. It, give me a call if you want to have that information and I can come in and we can fill this out.
Yeah.
If you find the information that we're supposed to put here, um, there is someone that's working with residents in town. Um, to fund, uh, to help spend this money. Um, so that might be the person we're supposed to put here, I don't know who that is, a contractor, if you find that out, we can enter that information.
I think it's Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is the one that's.
But they have a contractor that's actually doing. So that is, I'm guessing what I'm putting here, but I don't wanna do that yet, so, um, the rest will be ready.
Okay.
Notarized, and then this, that's all that this needs. Um, so next up, we have, this is a Harper's pay, Harper's payroll service, uh, it's a, this is a price proposal for Tom Blanford. Um, best payroll software available, uh, proposal is valid for thirty days, alright, so there we go. We do, so this is a. Upgrade. To. Official monthly services and options.
And Sarah recommends this.
Yeah, so Sarah sent an email, let me pull up the email, cause that will be helpful, Sarah Hunter. Um, here we go, we are looking to have online access for Nationwide to be able to upload employee data. This is a more secure way of corresponding than with Nationwide rather than fax and email. We need to update the information, but I am unable to sign for myself, so perfectly sign as the chair of BOS and we attach an appointment letter. Um, so this is what, so she's actually looking at funding this out of her. So all she needs from me is a signature.
I'll second that.
All right, I'll favor I.
Aye, aye.
All right, Tara, what's under? You got, you got information for us? All right, what do you got?
The first one is the Blanford Fire Association would like to donate. Three AEDs and associated accessories totaling forty-two seventy-nine seventy to the Blanford Fire Department. Uh, I have the serial numbers and the signatures of the association officers. What happened was, these were bought, put on a truck and never dropped before the board of swatmen to be accepted as gifts.
Okay.
So I make a motion, we accept these three AEDs as gifts from the Fireman's Association.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
So where are they gonna go, that's wonderful.
They're on three trucks already.
They're on three trucks, great.
Um, just been replaced to two hundred eighteen or nineteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
But, uh, it wore out eventually.
Great.
That's, that's that one, the other one is, I have a meeting with Hilltown tomorrow night. Do you want me to request that Angela come here and meet with us about this budget?
So here is what I have on that, um, we are trying to put together a six-town meeting. To talk about what we're gonna do about this situation as as a region. Um, I have reached out to Pioneer Valley Planning. Um, and asked them to be a part of the meeting because I think that it's an opportunity. Um, for, thank you, thank you, Mary, um, for maybe some creative thinking, uh, as far as, um. What is a resolution, I think that we have to do our due diligence and, um. I would like to put out an RFP, um. I think that it's our due diligence to to do that for the town, to see what, if we can get the best service.
Wait, I was asked to see if you requested a meeting with Hilltown.
I think, I mean, I I certainly not, um, opposed to a meeting with Hilltown, I think I have most of the information just from, um. The information that was sent, I know Angela has, is resigning.
No, I didn't know that.
Okay, I thought, I thought that's what I saw in email from her, but I could be wrong, um. I thought I said that on the meeting, um, so I don't, yeah, so, I mean, she's certainly welcome to come and we can have a conversation, um. I think that that we certainly can't really make any decisions, the more information we have, the better, so, sure, if she wants to come or just zoom, um. But just so you guys know, that's, my line of thought was, um, Josh put me in touch with a ambulance company out of Polio. Um, just to sort of reach out and talk to them about. The whole yolks in the process of putting in a RFP together. Um, what might that look like, is that an appealing, uh, something to a larger company? If, to have six hill towns, is that appealing, I know we have a lot of.
The chief and I are talking about going up and talking with Beckett.
And I know they just put some, um, I heard that they have invested in some, some great things recently there, so.
They're now a paramedic ambush.
Twenty-four seven, right, is that right?
Apparently, uh, so. The, we thought that if we offered them what we were paying. Hilltown now, uh, it might be quite attractive to Beckett.
So that's another option, is that Blanford divides from the other hill towns and finds something like Beckett that works for us because we're close, I mean.
And the last thing is, if Hilltown doesn't resolve. Uh, Blanford's gotta find another representative.
Okay.
I've had done all.
Yeah, I, that's fine. Um, thank you for putting in the time that you put in, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, so I think all of us are, would agree that our top priority is that Blanford has the best care.
Yeah.
Possible, I think it's a huge priority.
I, I've worked with Beckett, uh, our people are beginning to enjoy working with Beckett. Uh, they're close, they're a lot closer to Polio. And, uh, they can reach any part of Blanford as quick or sometimes quicker than Hilltown.
Yeah, so it, could you, um, let me know how that conversation goes and if, and if you start the conversation and they wanna. Talk more, you know, with the slipboard or whatever, um, I would be interested in in that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's another.
So I've shot my mouth off a while ago.
Thank you, no, that's a, that's something that's definitely been, you know, in the back of my mind, what are we gonna do with that, um?
Well, I've been, I've been myself, which, babe, we've been working on this.
Thank you, yeah. I, yeah, I I just have, I have to get contact information for the other, um, town administrators or chairs together, so that I can send out a group email and then. Um, like I said, Eric Weiss, Weiss was interested in being part of the special.
I'm more. Inclined to wanna stay with a, on a, on outfit like Beckett and Bullock. They're hill town people, we can work with them.
Well, you guys are the professionals, so.
Who was I thinking about joining them too, when I, we were having that conversation prior to me leaving there. Because they're, they're with, uh, Hengstale now, but.
And they're having a lot of trouble.
And they'd have a lot.
Interesting, the healthcare business is, I mean.
And Westfield comes up here and their guys are good, they're good to work with. But they can't be relied on for all of our ambulance service, cause we had a couple. In the last month where Westfield just didn't have an ambulance to set up there.
Yeah, twenty-four seven paramedic staffing is ideal, obviously, and just, I wonder if two towns join Beckett, they might need to.
Well.
Increase their.
We wanna talk with them.
Yeah.
Again, it's hill town people working with hill town people.
That might be an interest for Chester too, they order back there right now.
Yeah.
You would do that.
Hey, uh, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything else, I have something I'm supposed to, uh, sign, this must, it looks like it's a nationwide retirement solution. Okay, she just needs my signature, um. Is that it, do we have anything else? No, I didn't sign the warrant, do we need to approve the warrant? What warrant, what's the warrant number?
Under seventeen.
She won both, I think, Eric.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
There you go, alright, so we can adjourn at seven forty. Alright, here, I'll give you that one.
This isn't much different from the rules.
Uh, Joanne, I am not going to turn this off on my end, because I think you need to stop it there so that you.
I will.
I'm wearing more clothes now than I used to when I worked outdoors.